It is 7:20. We will reconvene in open session, the special meeting of the Waco YSD Board of Trustees. Sandra, anybody sign up for our in-person guests? All right. We'll move on to item five. I do want to welcome anybody watching on the website because as of September 1, any meeting in which we will take action will now be recorded and made available to the public. And so, we will move on to discussion and update for this evening. We begin with item 5A, which is our presentation and discussion on Avid. Dr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have our Avid Director, Dr. Robin Wilson. Will make this presentation on our advancement via individual determination program. Dr. Wilson?
Just Robin Wilson still.
Oh, I apologize.
That's all right. Almost dissertation's in the process.
Okay, I need to say something about dissertation or doctor.
It is started. It is started. It got the first three chapters turned in.
All right.
So, it's almost there. Thank you, Dr. Nelson. And thank you, School Board, for time for a few minutes to share with you some information about Avid. We're excited to show that our students are growing and we have over 200% increase in our Avid elective class. We're continuing to consider students in the middle, our students that are first-generation students, and working to provide those students with skills to help close that achievement gap. This slide is from some interviews that we did with our 11th and 12th graders on dual credit information. And just to show you some of the things that we are doing to help prepare our students for dual credit. I like especially what the last student said, that her Avid teacher had her prepared before she even started the dual credit class. So, Avid is helping to prepare these students for either advanced placement courses or either dual credit. We know that those are the courses that helps students attain and persist in post-secondary ed. This past year, we had 40% of our juniors and 70% of our seniors enrolled in either AP classes or dual credit. Our goal this year is 100% for our 11th and 12th graders to be enrolled in AP or dual credit. What the AP and dual credit courses allow us to do is to put those skills to practice that we are learning in our Avid elective class. This is just a little bit of results from another survey that we did with our students that are in Avid. And just to show you some of the things that Avid is also increasing with our students, such as a positive mindset and belief that they can be successful, organizational skills, goal-setting, and leadership skills. Each of these areas are impacting our students and helping them to be better students in our schools. Besides students, we also provide quite a bit of professional development or professional learning for our teachers. And so, this is a result from a teacher survey that I sent out to teachers that had gone to Summer Institute in 2014, 15, and 16. And Summer Institute is Avid's big three-day conference that we send quite a few teachers to. But it gives teachers a chance to learn new instructional strategies and methods. It's a chance to share and learn from colleagues across the state in their same content area. And it's an opportunity for them to meet with their team members from their campus to talk about how to successfully implement Avid on their campus. The goal for Avid is not just to close the achievement gap for our Avid students, but it's to close the achievement gap for all of our students. So, that's why it's so important that we continue to train our teachers and for them to go back to their campus and to share those instructional strategies with people that did not attend. So, it's been a real plus for our campuses. We've continued to have professional development. And our site teams are very instrumental in presenting that to other teachers. And it's been a very positive impact on our campus. Then your last slide is just a little snapshot of our college attainment for our seniors this past year. 96% of them were college-ready, which means they don't have to take any remediation courses. And they had also completed their FASIA. FASIA provides them an opportunity for all the financial aid that they could qualify for. Last year, our 55 seniors, 53 of them were college-ready and planned to attend college. This year, we hope to have 100% is our goal. And we also want to increase that 58% of acceptance to four-year college to closer to the 100%. And then the last thing, 38% of those seniors were first-generation students, which means that neither of their parents have graduated with a college degree. So, we're really excited about the things that Avid is providing for our students and our teachers. And that is my report. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Robin. Are there any questions?
Miss, I have a question, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Wilson, what are you doing your dissertation on? Is to connect it to Avid, right?
It's college readiness. It's a program that I worked with at Baylor and it compares the students that I worked with at Baylor through that program with some of our students at Waco High and McGregor and Robinson that were not enrolled in the program. But it's still all about college readiness. I think it eases out of my veins sometimes, so. But it's been really good.
Been looking forward to reviewing that study.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Sykes?
Robin, if you would, on the survey, for the student survey, you had indicated how Avid is benefiting students in terms of preparation, class work, leadership, et cetera. But I found the survey results very interesting, especially realized how important college is in my future. 58% strongly agree. The other areas, there's not as much strong response or as strong a response. What's your reaction to that in terms of perhaps program changes that would lend itself to move those students from agree to strongly agree?
Well, first of all, whenever you do surveys, you get people's opinion about how they think about things. You know, we want to continue to have students feeling like they are able to accomplish goals. And the leadership part is interesting because I think sometimes students don't see themselves as leaders. But as once they are enrolled in things where they become the person that is doing the best job in the classroom, they see themselves as leaders. To increase that from strongly, from agree to strongly agree, you know, we just keep talking with our teachers about the importance of making sure students feel like they're accomplishing goals. I think it's, I'm not real sure how you move from agree to strongly agree besides just, I mean, because we're dealing with 800 kids. And that ends up being quite a large number of students that feel good about what they're doing. I think sometimes I go back and look at the old surveys and we weren't at that point. We had a lot of the uncertain or I just agree. So, I probably should have given you some more details of old surveys where we didn't have as many students feeling as positive about things, so.
Clearly moving forward is the expectation because you've got a lot of progress today. And hopefully moving forward, there'll be some positive areas for improvement or whatever.
There's always room. We want 100% to be strongly agree. It'd be awesome.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I'm going to remind everybody, we are recording tonight, so you need to make sure you keep a little ring box lit up around your microphone when you're speaking. Otherwise, Mr. Potager keeps sending these text messages to tell us that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from Ms. Wilson? Thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
There's a report in the packet on fees paid to purchasing cooperatives. Are there any questions on that? Or on the purchase over $25,000? Okay, then we'll move on to Lone Star Governance, item 5B, which is the Time Tracker Dual Credit Summer Update and the End-of-Year Student Certification. Dr. Nelson, I'll let, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. On page 15, you'll see our updated Board Use Time Tracker. And we will have more detailed discussion on our time tracker and some of the updates that we've received from the Texas Education Agency on what's called a leaderboard. Most of you are aware of that. So, obviously, our time tracker's going to be significant in order to maintain our compliance with TEA. So, that's all we have for the time tracker. I allow you to look at that. It's pages 15 and 16.
Speaking of the time tracker, is there somebody who's been assigned to keep up with time at the meetings?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Because I didn't do it tonight. I'm glad you guys.
So, Avid is part of instruction for the record. So, that was about an hour. Just kidding.
That's the way. That's a clock, too.
Right. I'm sure she could go, but no. So, with that, that brings us to item D2 for the record. Section 5, subsection D. The second one is Dual Credit Summer Update. We have our Executive Director of Secondary Curriculum, Dr. Scott McClanahan, who became a grandfather on Tuesday. So, we want to congratulate him for that. Dr. McClanahan?
Hello, Board. Good evening. So, my progress measure for this month is looking at summer dual-credit course completion. And this is trying to get us to board goal two, which is our students earning 12 or more post-secondary credits by the time they graduate. And you'll see there the progress measure results during this summer. We had 134 students that went out to MCC and successfully completed 203 classes. And I was trying to put this in a frame where you could understand how this was building up to that actual board goal. So, down at the bottom, you can see that I've broken it down by our benchmark year. We had 713 graduates that year. And we had 23 12th graders that completed two summer courses that year. That would have been 3.23% of all the seniors. And that then led to 85 of the 673 graduates there having two or more academic dual-credit courses by the time they graduated, which put us at 12.6%. If you look at last year, we had more students, more 12th graders that went out and took courses, which resulted in bringing that number, completing two or more dual-credit courses, up to 24.3%. This year, we had 42 12th graders that went out there. Very similar percent of seniors as we had last summer. And if we base that, the number of graduate seniors right now that we have that have completed two or more dual-credit classes using the 773 seniors we had on September the 12th, that puts us at about 17.2%. If we look at the students that are taking dual-credit classes during this school year, right now, we're on track to be at 22.4% by the time we finish out this year. And that's based on all 773 of those 12th graders graduating. And so, that puts us in a good place to be in line with getting to our 20% by 2020 because these students have gotten six hours already. And so, the additional classes that they take over those, that'll just move us closer to that 20%. Any questions on this?
You needed to speak slower to run the clock out a little more.
Yeah.
Mr. President?
It.
Mr. Manning first and then Ms. T. Kell.
What is the expected date that where are we going to have someone graduate from MCC and Waco YSD?
We'll have two students this year.
We'll have two of them this year.
Yes, I have one at Waco High and one at University. And it's pretty amazing. The one at University, she actually in two years started taking dual credit and piecing her credits together to be able to have enough to get her associate's degree. Took May Mester, summer classes, Winter Mester. The student at Waco High is actually one of our Accelerate students. And she actually accelerated the Accelerate program so she could graduate a year early. So, she's actually a junior. And she's going to graduate at the end of her junior year with her associate's degree and her diploma.
What do you expect in the future?
Right now, we have 42 seniors, or 42 juniors between the two high schools that are on track to finish their associate's degree at the end of next year, at the end of their senior year. And the numbers are 42, 73 sophomores I have right now. And we have 121 freshmen. So, we, you know, they're all moving toward, and we've had very little attrition out of the program.
Thank you.
Sure.
Questions, ma'am?
Ms. T. Kell?
Okay. So, your explanation was really helpful. But I have to say, this is really, this is really hard to read and to process and understand. And I, you know, I just, in the end, and now I'm with you. But in the end, it makes me wonder, at the risk of sounding like Mr. Dupuy, if this is an exercise in futility, I'm not so sure that this particular item is getting us, is, I just, I don't know. Is this, do you feel like this particular goal and the focus we have and then you spending the time drilling down in these numbers and percentages is really accomplishing what we spent so much time talking about, which is we want to increase the percentage of kids who are college-ready with that 12 hours or more?
Well, in order for them to get to the 12 hours, they have to get through the first two classes. And once they get through the first six hours, they then establish a college GPA. And if that college GPA falls below a 2.0, the kids are banned from any further dual credit during high school. So, right there, we have students that will get to six hours, and that is as far as they can go. So, it's kind of the first stopping point. So, looking at the number of students that are getting to the first six hours, that's a big tell as to where we're going to get to in terms of students being able to achieve the 12 hours.
And so, how can you, all right. So, what are you doing after you spent the time?
So, what I'm doing now is.
What are you doing with it? What difference is it making in your?
So, now what I'm doing is, I'm going back after I looked at the summer grades and the kids that were with those, that had finished the classes over the summer. When I get all of the transcripts from MCC, then I sit down and go through and I look for the students who I saw struggling with a particular course or who I see has a grade point average that if they get one more low grade is going to knock them out of any further dual credit. And then I start having conversations with the dual-credit coordinators at the high schools so that we can call those students in and put them on some kind of a success plan. Having them define what exactly was it that offered you the most difficulty, having them brainstorm what they could have done to troubleshoot that so that as they progress on through more dual-credit courses, they understand what is available to them. And what we've really been seeing, Ms. T. Kell, is that the majority of the students don't have a good, they don't have a good prioritized list of different ways to deal with obstacles that they come across. And we know from research that that's what happens to students that keeps them from graduating when they get to post-secondary school. So, I really use this to kind of activate the, you know, team on the campuses so that they are watching these kids, checking on them, making sure the kids know where to go for help. Because the great thing about being in dual credit is that this makes them MCC students. And they not only have access to what Waco YSD has, but all the services that are offered to any other MCC student. Free tutoring, success coaches, you know. And so, the students are not used to having those kind of options available to them. And so, that's how this, being able to look at this data helps me to work toward that 20%.
I know what you're asking, but to make sure everybody understands, you're not saying the dual-credit program is an exercise in futility. It's this framework of whether these goal progress measures are giving us information to be able to track and him information that's helpful.
Right.
Move him towards the goal. That's the question.
Absolutely, because.
I didn't want anybody to accidentally put in.
I'm sure y'all all understood it very quickly when you read it in your packet.
Oh, absolutely.
I thought, okay, I don't even know what we're talking about.
Does that make?
It's supposed to be our goal to spend all these hours doing. And I just, yeah, okay.
Does that make more sense now than I?
Absolutely. I appreciate it. And I just, I trust you. And I trust that you're saying you're doing what you're doing. But I, forgive me, but tend to be a little skeptical about how far that trickles down onto our campuses. And I, if anybody can get it done, you can, but.
We're going to do it.
But, you know, having those conversations at that level with kids is huge. And I think that for one thing, if the kids know that we care and we're watching and we're here to help them, that's going to make all the difference. Because if you fail a class and nobody calls you.
That's exactly right.
You don't hear about it again.
And I've got to say that Avid has played a big part, too, because a lot of my students are also in the Avid elective. And so, they have a teacher who's there offering tutoring for them anytime that they say that they're struggling. Even our kids that are doing dual-credit courses that are online, because that's the best venue for us to be able to serve the kids with their schedule conflicts. Even those students have a facilitator over that dual-credit lab that's checking their grades, that's checking in with them to make sure that their assignments are getting turned in just to set those good habits in place so that as they move on to post-secondary school, they have a better chance at finishing.
I appreciate you playing cleanup because that's.
I just want somebody, I didn't want it to look wrong in the, and what we're sensitive to, Scott, is, we don't want to make this, we don't, yeah, well, I do. I don't want to create busy work on you. I mean, if drilling down to the point of calculating the percentage of students who've earned two college credits in summer school through MCC is helpful to you to advancing the goal, then that's, then this is the type of progress measure we need. If you're sitting there in your office crunching four layers of numbers to get to that result saying, boy, what a waste, then we're all.
Well, this is.
We share that frustration. But if that, if this really does give you that kind of granular detail and it's helpful to you, then I think we move forward with.
And the, well, the thing is, is that since this is the first time this particular progress measure's rolled around, I had to do a little bit of extra work now because I wanted to set where we were so I knew if we'd made progress. But now I have this so that, you know, next year at this time, I've already got this, I'll just add on that year. Yeah.
And it is helpful to you in terms of.
Oh, yes, most definitely.
Right. Mr. Manning, I'm sorry.
What's the crossover between Avid and the dual-credit courses? Do you know how many?
I don't, I don't know the percentage automatically, but.
Juniors last year were 40% and seniors last year were 70% enrolled in dual credit. And our goal this year is 100%. That's kind of in my directive to the high schools. So, if you're a junior or senior, you're in dual credit or advanced placement. In Avid, like if you're an Avid student.
Okay.
Other questions, comments?
I have one quick comment. I just want to, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to emphasize that now our work has to go to the campuses. You know, listening to Ms. Wilson talk about the directive, well, these are, these are kids who are the first kids in their family to go to college. And so, they, I know from personal experience, they don't have the structure, the home support, to know how to handle, as Dr. McClanahan said so eloquently, when they face a brick wall. You walk into College English and you're thinking you're going to be successful, start writing your paper and struggling. Well, they've got to come back to the campus. And if they're going over there Tuesday, Thursday, well, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, we've got to have systems in place to make sure they're successful. So, I like, really like what you said about activating our campus teams to make sure that our interventions are just as tiered as we would have for our regular ed program as we have for our Avid dual-credit kids. And we'll follow up on that with this board to show that.
And that's been, you know, it's developed over time. Because when we had the surge in dual-credit enrollment after the TRE, we didn't have that in place. And so, kids would not do well in a class. And we really didn't have any system for what were we doing to help them. And so, we've really developed this good relationship with the Avid teachers on campus. We've got our, a counselor on each campus that is now, you know, they're the primary contact on the campus for dual credit. And so, they're the ones that make contact with the college, with the professors that come on campus. And so, they're constantly getting feedback. And so, it's been good.
You know, another way to measure this is to look at, the TRE was in 2015?
Mm-hmm.
So, look at 2016 respectfully, I shouldn't say it publicly, but how much money was wasted on kids that were in the dual-credit program. But for whatever reason, they were unsuccessful, and we're moving that to zero. Where every kid that we pay for them to go to MCC, they're successful. And that's how you maximize those taxpayer dollars.
Other questions, comments? All right. There's also another goal progress, I'm sorry, Carrie, do you have some?
Thank you.
Another goal progress measure as well.
Thank you, Mr. President. The final Lone Star Governance update we have today will come from our Director of Career and Technical Education. It will cover the end-of-year summary, comprehensive data on our student certifications. We have Ms. Donna McKeethen. Okay, well, okay, sorry. We just.
Our long is Robin.
Yeah, we're just throwing them out in this meeting, handing them out.
We've got a lot of envelopes. And I'm bringing you to talk about the progress measure. Current technology has been focused on increasing our certification. That's been a state goal for us for quite some time. And we are pleased that we did meet this measure this year. That came about, a couple of things that we put in place. First of all, first of all, you as a board, I think that was said already that the board recognizing that and beginning to notice that how many students are completing those certifications goes a long way with our teachers because sometimes, you know, that not having it in the forefront of the board's attention doesn't give them as much attention as what perhaps they should. We also started holding teachers accountable. As I looked at these teachers, I looked to see, this is how many of your students passed their certification test. If that number was not what I considered adequate, then there was a goal set for that teacher to increase their certifications. I think the biggest piece of that was as we moved forward, we knew that a part of the accountability system was going to come back to these certifications. And so, that gave us as a current technology department a role to play in the accountability system, which they were, they're very excited actually to be a part of that because sometimes they didn't feel like they could help as much as they really could. So, we did at the, one of the big, we had 117 students get their certified nursing certifications this last year. That's a huge number. It's up quite a bit. And part of it, their kids were having trouble in the past finding a place to test, you know, because they were limited of where they could test and the dates and that sort of thing. So, working with Guaca, we became our own testing site. We had to go through quite an extensive process to become a certification site. So, now that we're a certification site, it becomes incumbent on Crystal Wilson then to bring the testers to us so that we can test our students onsite rather than worrying about getting them out of town. We were going out of town in some cases, relying upon MCC's testing site. So, we became our own testing site. And really, that has made a difference. We have increased, we're not, 80% of our kids passing their certification is not where we want to be. We want it to be much higher than that. We have also added additional certifications. We're looking, we're, next year, this coming school year, we've added the Fanic Arm Certification at Guam, which is that robotic arm that students will be, get certifications. It took us several years because our teacher had to go through quite a bit of training to teach that. And then through the IMSA grant, we were able to buy that Fanic arm for them to learn how to do that. We're also adding the EKG certification. We added that because our business partners told us that for them to be even more marketable once they graduate to go to work at the hospital, being able to run an EKG would make that student more marketable. And so, we've added that. We also are adding the, in our automotive program, we are going to be dual-credit. So, we're adding the ASC certifications. There's a way that you can get those certifications. Once you're out of high school and you're in the job to get the certification, you have to take the test and work for two years. However, if they take the test in high school, they get kind of like a semi-certification. And then when they get their two years, then they don't have to retake their test. So, it puts them on that trajectory to be a certified technician. We are also adding the Adobe Suite. We worked with our academy that includes the AV Academy at Waco High University. We met with those teachers this summer and we're adding that Adobe Suite. So, we're constantly adding these certifications, especially when our business partners come to us and tell us that it makes the students more marketable to get a job once they graduate. Or to look at, not just get a job necessarily right out of high school, but give them something to do while they're in college. We are currently exploring for the following year, we're going to look at pharmacy tech and a few other things that we're looking at so that we can continue to add the certifications. So, it's not enough to do well in these. We want to add additional so that we can meet the needs of more students and then also meet the need of our community for our students in those areas. We really rely heavily on our business advisory boards to give us the feedback that says, yes, we're hiring these students. But if you'll just add this one more thing, then we can hire even more. So, we rely heavily on that business input.
Thank you, Donna. Questions? Is your light on?
Yes, it is.
There you go.
Donna, just a clarification on the, on the, right above.
Right above on your chart, right above, the... I guess it's a restatement where it says 2016-17 checkpoint, increase the cumulative percentage of students earning a workforce certification each semester from a total percentage of 67 to... Should be 80 percent by 2020?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, it should have been 80, which we wrapped it up.
Yeah, thank you.
And I was, you know, it's kind of one of those things that we saw that, you know, you could hear me kind of hoping in the hall and in the hall, because we really worked hard for this goal, and it's not something that we just put out there. We have been putting things in place to make sure this happens, and we're pretty proud of what we've done this year.
Other questions?
Oh, yeah.
Ms. Manning?
Mrs. Katherine. How many certifications do we offer right now? Do you know off the top of your head?
Well, we offer the Microsoft Office Suite, which is students who want to go into business, they can do Microsoft Office.
Well, I mean, you don't have to describe all of them. I mean, just...
I've got a... I'd have to... That's why I'm going through my head to channel. We can get it to you.
Okay.
We just did that for Dr. Nelson.
Okay. And then the other question that... When a student is trying to get a certification, is there a minimum number or can just one student get a certification? Or do you... Is a minimum number of students need to be available to get that certification?
No, there's not a minimum number. But for example, it's kind of like, I tell the teachers that their certification that's attached to the course is kind of like their STAR test. So we judge how well an English teacher does by how many students pass the STAR test at the end of that time. We have moved to a situation where we're looking at these academies and saying, here is your STAR test, here is that CNA certification. That's your mark that your program is moving in the right direction. So there are some little minor certifications that... I mean, like for example, Microsoft Office. We'll have students that really understand Excel, and that's the one they want to do. We'll have some that really want to do a PowerPoint, but we encourage them to get at least one. However, if they want to do more than one, we do have that. We... The other one that we added this year, and I failed to mention it, we have a class called Principles of Business. We're really changing the way we do our business program at Waco High in particular. And so now there is a certification that's called an IC3 certification, which says if that student's ready to use the computer in a business setting, a lot of times you'll see people in technology departments that have it. And so we're actually have put that in too, so that all these students taking that freshman business class will actually get an industry certification. Once again, it's like their STAR test for that principles class.
Okay, is there any extra calls? I mean, are these... Some of these certifications do... Are they statewide certifications or they just...
Some of them are national, and some of them are... The ones that you see, if you look at the... On the back over there, it talks about that there are some that are not reported on Perkins. This 80 percent is that that's reported on Perkins. This is data that we turn into the state. So for example, the forklift driver's license is not reported on Perkins.
Okay.
So that... This 80 percent shows the ones that we report on our national thing, and so there would be...
Are there costs involved in getting this?
There are costs involved. We have currently applied for a Perkins grant to help pay for that. The one that's most expensive is that CNA. It's around $130 or so. And so we have in the past been paying that for the students out of CTE funds, but as you can imagine, that kind of sucks up a lot of money pretty quickly. So we've applied for a Perkins grant that will turn in on Monday, that will help us to give us a year. And then the Business Advisory Board for the Healthcare Academy is putting in a program called the Circle of Care that will allow for donations to come into scholarship to students. So the idea is that we get the grant to pay for it for a year to give us the opportunity to build up that fund and then go forward with it.
I mean this philosophically, but I'm really interested in your perspective. So we have a little over 20 certifications, I believe, a vast amount. And you identified a few of them, correct me if I'm wrong, that are considered dual credit.
The certifications?
Or are you saying none of those are dual credit?
They can be attached to dual credit, but they're not necessarily... Like, for example...
And the numbers that are being presented under a dual... Like, if a kid takes a program automotive at TSTC?
No, we are in the process...
We're doing it.
Okay, well, let me back up. So some of these... Some of these certifications are linked to dual credit courses. Some of them are not. So for example, when we put in the IC3, those are freshman students. That's not a dual credit class. It is an articulated class that they can get credit for. So in some cases, it's linked to dual credit, but not necessarily every time.
And so would you... I understand we have a, for the record, I believe, a small group of students that certification may be the climax of their academic career.
Yes, sir.
That's a small group. And so I just wonder how the campuses identify kids who are pursuing certifications as the culmination of their post-secondary pursuits? And how that compares with our goal, our pro... Goal progress measure, to get so many of our students seeking dual credit? So I'm wondering if our... How many of the kids that are in your program, God bless those kids and those teachers, and there's always going to be a place for them for the record? But I just wonder how many of them are like, no, I'm not pursuing dual credit because that's not my pathway. That's not my academic career. Does that make sense?
I can answer that question.
Right.
Because when we create a career and technology program... So let's do, say welding, for example. When we look at the welding program, we want to make sure that when a student finishes that program, he has or she has three exit points. Exit point number one is that they receive a certification that puts them at a higher pay rate when they graduate. The second... The second exit point is that that student could also go on to TSTC to get an even greater. And then the third exit point in every program we create is to go to a four-year college.
Welding?
Yes, sir. Because in welding, students in welding oftentimes may choose to go into mechanical engineering, but they have a passion for that, putting that piece together. Seriously, I mean...
No, we're not. Because we had lunch first in the Business League, and there was a business owner who has an engineering firm who was saying the same thing, that some of these kids want to build things instead of welding. And Dr. Nelson has the same question of him.
One of the... And let me give you an example. What can go to automotive at Waco High? Our Val Victorian at Waco High, when he was going through the program, I guess it's been two years ago, two, three years ago, he would go to his counselor and he'd say, you can do whatever you want with my schedule. Don't take me out of AP and don't take me out of automotive. Those were the two things that he insisted were always in his schedule. He is now in mechanical engineering in college, because that was his... Sometimes they're a passion. At Columbia, okay? I'm sorry, I didn't mean that part. But he's at Columbia. So what I'm saying is that... And I don't mean to get on my career technology soap.
I don't think we have like hundreds of those, but God, you know, God bless our kids, you know?
That's probably more than you would think.
I'm sure. I accept that.
Because what happens is, is that oftentimes too, the way we market these certifications is that you can get this certification and you can work, because many of our kids will have to work while they're going to college. This gives you a higher payer job while you're working. The pharmacy tech was... Came about because there was a conversation that I had that a student... Their student was in med school, and they worked at Walgreens Pharmacy when they were in college. And when they come up for Christmas break, they work in the Waco Walgreens. So that gives phlebotomy, some of those other things are ways by which our students can get these. And the thing about it is, I believe that as you work with kids, we all set these high expectations in the CTE classes as well, that these programs are going to lead to a four-year degree. But the reality is, when they come to the end of their time, they've got decisions to make. And if I can give them three options at the end of their graduation, that this is what is available to you, then I think I've served them well.
Absolutely. I just want to say that I think that's something we need to examine and really show evidence. You know, the kid two years ago, that's a great example, but my conversations with our students, which in six weeks has been deep and profound, a lot of our top kids are being... They would love to go to Guama, Guaca. They want to be doctors. They want to be engineers. But when you really start looking at their schedule, they can't play football, be in AP Bio, and go to Guama, and so they're having to make some decisions. And the first thing that goes is some of these career and technical certifications. And we just got to make some decisions about how important that is to our scheduling.
What we could do is we could compare how many of those dual credit students are getting those certifications as well that might be. Because I know for example, at the... Well, at Guama, they're getting dual credit and welding, so those are going to be instant. But then they're at the Healthcare Academy.
Yes, ma'am.
I currently have six kids that are taking a medical program through and CTE and clinical program through Guama.
That's awesome.
And one of the things we talked about at that luncheon was sort of the messaging and the marketing of the career and technology program. But the truth is, particularly some of those higher-level new-edge technologies at Guama, like the robotics and the plasma cutting and some of the things they're doing, students can move in and out on a career path where they are pursuing a four-year academic degree and still utilizing that skill set. But I don't know that we've conveyed that to parents and students to where I think they're looking at it as, if I'm going to Guama, the expectation may be I'm not going to pursue a four-year academic degree. And I think we need to show that because of the level of technology that they can experience and encounter there, that in fact, it's not an either or. It's a pathway, as you say, to that third exit point. But I don't know that we're communicating that way.
I agree with you, and that's a... That is a... If we can come up with a solution on how to do that, we could...
Change the world.
Change the world, truly and truly. Because that is a... It is not only a dilemma of how to do that for high school programs, but TSTC as well.
Right, but that sounds like something that the National Career and Technical Education Administrator of the Year would certainly be able to bring to the table. We have that caliber.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, so congratulations, by the way.
You've been the State Career Technology Director of the Year twice now, right?
Twice, so...
But, you know, it's something that it's an ongoing thing, and it is, you're right. It is something that we work constantly to do. And I would be curious, Scott, we can crunch numbers.
Any for us to collaborate? Thank you so much, Mrs. Katherine.
I do have one other sort of logistical question.
Yes, sir.
We were on a conference call with all 31 districts doing Lone Star Governance, and Tyler was presenting their goals, and they had a similar career and technology goal, and they also exceeded it. Now theirs was the number of students who were participating in different pathways. So whereas yours is a percentage... But one of the things that the superintendent referenced was, give me the legislation, House Bill 5? And because of the increased emphasis, that a number of these goals frankly are easier to meet than maybe we anticipated when we set them back in the summer because of the emphasis from the legislature on some of the current technology. Which gets us back to... I mean, this... We expected to be at 80 percent in 2020. We're at 80 percent in 2017. Do we need to go back? You know, I wouldn't say one of our requirements is, it's got to be attainable. It's sort of his smart. And so 100 percent may not be attainable, but do we need to revisit whether because of some of the legislative changes, 80 percent was really, as you said, that's great, but we know we can do better?
Right.
Do we need to revisit and set that goal higher?
80 percent is what we're required to do for Perkins legislation. That is my... That is what that is. That is the state goal for every CT department across the state is 80 percent. You know, I mean, personally, I think we should be beyond that. And I think the next goal is to have more meaningful certifications, perhaps tied to dual credit.
We just want... I want the board to receive reports for the next three years on this goal with the performance measures. Of course, this is the goal we met three years ago. And so I would encourage staff to look at that, and if we need to adjust that goal, so you continue to have something to aim for and bring that back to the board, we can look at it.
But it was, you know, I think what's important to note is, this is not something that we just did in one year. This is something that we've been working for, for some time.
Very well said. Ms. DeKalb?
A follow-up. I think one thing that confused me is, this is not spring dual credit completion, right? Is that the...
This is not dual credit.
Yeah, so when you look at... Look at... Maybe we... I just want to make sure that we document this correctly on page 18. You see that?
I don't have those numbers.
1617 checkpoint, it's not spring dual credit.
Oh, it shouldn't say...
Yeah, there's a typo there.
Yeah. And so it just brings me back to this is hard to read, and I don't know... I don't know. I don't... That's not for me.
I think that that's a... Aren't they... There's part of the same goal, aren't they?
They... They're...
That was on the template, and I think it probably...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but... Yeah, but... Well, I'll only point that out in that it's part of the system that we're in and we can't get out of, but these are hard to read, and they're... And I don't know what we can do to make it a little bit easier on us. And then the other thing too is, I was... What Pat just said is, we don't need to keep repeating this. Looks like we've done it, and we need to look at... They need to bring forward another progress measure that's different or...
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
I mean, otherwise, as I said, we're going to be here three years saying we met this one back in 2017, not 2022. Stephanie, did you have something?
Yeah, I did. I was, you know, looking at Board Gold 2 and Board Gold 3, and you know, it seems like we're starting to attain them already in terms of percentages. And so I think maybe just even some minor tweaking, you know, looking at Board Gold number two, knowing, okay, our kids are almost... We're, you know, almost at 20... We hit 20 percent last year. We're, you know, we've... We're almost... We're there pretty much. So should we add another little like metric in there of, okay, if kids are getting... If they're graduating with their associate's, let's make sure they have a 3.0 so they can get into the College of School of Education, this business school, the... Whatever they kind of want to go into, you know, I think... Yeah, dual credit at 2.0, you know, that's not going to get you anywhere.
Right, a qualitative component as well as a quantitative to show...
Yeah, so both and, making sure that kids are getting enrolled. But then they're also, if they're graduating with the associate's degree, we want them at that 3.0 or higher so that those... They're not entering into this school of it or the business school, kind of with their legs cut out from underneath them.
I think you heard the board say, let's look at those goals, make sure they're still a challenge and that we... I mean, we did these in a vacuum. We didn't know where we would be, and we were... I mean, we were the first ones in the state, among the first group going through this. And I think feel comfortable to tweak those if we need to revisit some of them.
That we would come back and revisit some of the goal progress measures.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, ma'am. Anybody have any reports from any of the committees that they serve on, on behalf of the board? of the board? And if you don't know what committees you're on, there's a, I think there's a list. You might have anything? All right, then we will move on to item six, discussion of possible action for this evening. The first is discussion of possible action to approve a backup submitter for access to TEA secure applications. Dr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an oversight from last month, and the background information is included. It's procedural for us to stay in compliance with Texas Education Agency, and we recommend approval on consent agenda. Or we won't take action tonight. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
All right, we'll take action tonight. I'll entertain a motion on the recommendation. Page 22.
This, a bunch of legalese, I mean, Ms. Davis, would you like to give a brief update for Trustee Dupuy?
TEA.
Right.
It's the Texas Education Agency Secure Network, so, secure environment, yes. And basically, there's various applications that staff has to access in order to do different, like to submit PMS and do different duties that are required by state law. And the superintendent is always the first approver, and he is, can appoint somebody else to be a backup approver. Right now, Rick Hartley was that backup approver. We don't have anybody at this point, and so we've got some applications sort of backed up, and we need to get somebody approved.
Other questions, comments, or I'll entertain a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we accept the administration recommendation that the board, the trustees approve Cheryl Davis, Chief Financial Officer, as the primary request submitter designated for TEA Secure Environmental Application as presented.
I can interfere with our ratio on student discussion if you make those motions quicker. Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. It was well done.
May proceed.
We'll move on to 6B, which is the agreement with the City of Waco regarding WSD TV.
This is for the record, Mr. President, members of the board was inadvertently left off the last agenda. This is our relationship between Waco ISD Instructional Television and the City of Waco Television Programming. It cost us approximately $5,500 to have this relationship. The detailed contract is included in your backup info, and we're respectfully asked for approvals at this time.
Questions, comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the administration's recommendation.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Manning. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. I've been asked to pull item 6C, correct?
Yes, sir.
Nelson, so we'll move on to item D, which is the discussion of possible action to appoint Mr. Manning as our delegate to the Texas Association of School Boards. Any presentation on that? Folks, Norm's been doing it for years. I would entertain a motion, we appoint him. I'll continue to agree to be the alternate because he goes religiously, and so there's no time commitment to being the alternate, so. Or any of you can be the alternate. They still want to cut into your social plans either. Thank you, Mr. Dupuy. And also, you do a great job, and appreciate the feedback from the boards you provide us. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously, and we'll go on to the consent agenda. If you have any additions or corrections to the minutes, get those to Sandra. Are there any questions on the budget amendment?
I feel like we've put you through this exercise several times. The big one that involves the construction projects, just a brief overview, we're.
Yes.
Even though we just adopted a budget, we're already amending it, and we knew about most of this.
These were projects that were funded last year. They were on that list of committed funds that we take in August every year to commit part of the fund balance to go forward. At the point that we adopt the budget, we don't actually know maybe where these projects are going to end up, because there's expenditures still occurring. Now, we have the September, the August billings done, and these are final balances that we now roll forward and roll back into the budget. But these were committed funds at the end of the year.
Okay, fair enough. And then the list of projects is on.
63.
Yeah, and 64. It's the actual list. Any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion on, oh, no, we're just doing the discussion of consent agenda. I'm sorry, moving ahead of myself. Item C, we probably need to move off the consent agenda unless we change the recommendation, because right now, the recommendation is the board consider appointing someone to the, or nominating someone to the appraisal district board. So I guess we can either come up with who that's going to be and leave it on the consent agenda next week.
That's what we're.
Okay. Ms. Sykes, you want to give us some background insight, your willingness to continue in that position, or if you turn your mic on?
Yes, sir. Every two years, the appraisal district board, which there are five elected members, will come forward to all the entities in the appraisal district area, McLennan County, that will provide a slate of candidates to be voted on by the entities based on an allocation of votes, based on their property valuations for each of the entities. So those vote allocations will come out after the nominations are made. So we can nominate, I believe, up to five candidates. And typically speaking, there's a candidate from the Waco School Board, there's a candidate from McLennan County, the County Commissioners Court, the City of Waco, Midway, and then there's another position that has kind of accumulation of votes. So it's every two years, it comes up, all five members come up at the same time, and there's an additional member, a sixth member, which is the assessor collector, which is a non-voting member of the appraisal district.
Well, and refresh my memory, two years ago, we cast enough votes to you to get you a guaranteed spot.
Right.
Then we committed the rest of our votes to Mildred Watkins.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And is she interested in serving again?
As my, as far as I know, yes. So.
We can nominate those, too.
How many votes do we have?
It's gonna, it calculates about 840, something like that. And there's a, there's a specific level that it takes, and typically speaking, we are well over that level because of the size of our valuation.
And how many, how many votes did we give you last time? Was it 800 or something?
We gave him 20% plus one, so we knew he was on, and then we gave the rest.
That, that's the calculation. Thank you.
Okay.
I will say, Alan called me earlier today and said he is willing to continue in this position unless there's someone else on this board that is particularly interested in serving on the appraisal district board, in which case we would, we could do that as well. I'm sorry, Alan, I don't hear anybody else volunteering. I told you I would make, I would, I would, I would make the ask. So with that, do I hear a motion to make nominations for the appraisal district board? We've gotten, put the names in there.
So I'm thinking nominate Alan Sykes and.
Watkins. All right. Thank you, Ms. Teckel. Well, we're not moving tonight. I am, I am, changed the consent agenda item to say the administration recommendation is Alan and Mildred, and then we'll vote on that next week on the consent agenda. I've never, I've made that mistake twice tonight. I'm sorry, folks. Yes, sir.
So would it not be an option to consider approving trustee Sykes tonight with the majority of the number of votes that's necessary for him to be nominated, and allow this board to wait and see the other candidates? Because you might want to.
All we're doing tonight is just putting names in the nomination. We don't vote till, like, November or December.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So all we're doing tonight is nominating folks, and then we'll get the full list, and then we'll decide how to allocate the votes then.
Don't wait.
It's some, it's a McLennan County process. Right. So it'll be a resolution, and if we're going to leave it on consent agenda, then the administration's recommendation needs to be that the resolution nominate Alan and Mildred Watkins. Okay. And then we live there. All right, if I can get this straight. All right. Next item to be discussed next week are the targeted improvement plans. They're on the consent agenda for next week, so if folks have questions, I think most of the principals are here, and so we can run through those this evening.
Mr. President?
Ms. Teckel?
I have a question as to whether or not we're going to get credit for discussing these plans.
May I answer that, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. This goes part of our Lone Star Governance. So.
I know, we're governed by the clock. That's an appropriate question to ask.
Here's, Ms. Cordawick, I believe she wants to make a comment, or I'm sorry.
Yep.
I have, I have several questions actually regarding the targeted improvement plan. So I'd love to, actually, one question kind of per improvement plan when I went and read through them.
Okay. I don't know how we do that. I guess we do Alta Vista first. I have sort of an overarching, two overarching questions, but mine are not specific to any campus.
Maybe I can answer that.
I guess the first is, when I was reading through them, the first one actually is on Alta Vista, but there are things that say, implement vertical team triads that will collaborate on instructional effectiveness. That means nothing to me. But it doesn't matter if this, on your campus and your staff, I mean, that has meaning, and y'all know what that means.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And because that's what this is.
I'd like to explain it if you would like.
And here would be my other sort of over, no, it's okay. But here's my overarching question, and it may be that. When I went through all of these, there were reference to student walkthrough data and T-test. There were references to instructional coaching and for teachers with the campus instructional leadership team. There were numerous references on Crestview and others to PLCs, all of which are things obviously we've been doing in the district for a long time. And so I guess, as Ms. Cordawick has her questions for each of the campuses, and I'm not saying you have to have something unique or innovative or something new that you're doing different this year, but if there is something there on your two-page that is entirely different than what you've done, or something innovative you want to highlight for the board, I think that would be helpful. Because a lot of it, and some of you were very close, maybe staying the course is the appropriate tack to take. And I'm not fussing at anybody, but it would be nice to know if there is some significant difference over what we've done in the past. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Cordawick and her questions.
Yeah, one of my questions actually was that vertical team triads, just kind of why, I guess you guys decided to do the vertical team triads instead of kind of a horizontal approach of kind of like a modeling, yeah. This is an addition. Okay. So we still have our weekly, yes, yes. We, so we still have, every Friday, we meet in our horizontal PLCs. We rotate between reading and math, so for tomorrow, for our reading, and actually, it's reading slash writing, because we know the importance of writing as well. And so we actually have Region 12 coming over tomorrow and working with our teachers in writing. The school, the district has actually adopted Lucy Caucett's units of study for writing, which we had begun last year, and so she's coming in and she's following up on that writing with our campus.
Mr. President, may I respond to Ms. Cordawick's question?
Yeah.
I think your point's an excellent question. I think Ms. Logan's response was excellent as well. You know, one of the things I think that we could do a better job of is increasing awareness throughout the campus community about the problem. And so what you'll find is, and I'm not speaking about Alta Vista directly, but in a host of our campuses, the academic achievement challenges have been delegated to third, fourth, and fifth grade. And you have kindergarten and first and second grade teachers that will say, oh, that's not my issue. And we vehemently disagree. We want them to, and when you look at some of our third grade data, with all due respect, it's connected to some of the primary deficiencies that, you know, second graders can't read coming out of second grade. It's going to be hard for a third grade teacher to focus on reading comprehension, and you're still trying to get them to read on grade level. That gets worse as the reading gap widens. So just wanted to add that we definitely are doing horizontal for the record. That's mandatory every school, every week. But we add the vertical. Go ahead, Ms. Logan.
Yeah, so in addition to that, we do vertical. In fact, yesterday's Wednesday faculty meeting, we were focused on our vertical alignment, so we have a vertical across the campus. I met with our reading vertical team K through 3, and then I had someone else, and then we had math and science. But the triads are actually just what Dr. Nelson was just discussing. So what we did is we've partnered teachers, like I have first, third, and fifth grade teachers partnered together very strategically so that they are working together. They are required to observe each other and do observation forms, and then they come back and they develop an action plan, which is part of that, on, there's observations, and then we meet with them during faculty meetings to discuss those observations.
Yeah, that, that's great. I mean, I love, I completely see.
Yeah, so we're, yes.
Vertical alignment. I understand that. I think my thought was, we're kind of under the gun. So are we putting our most, are we putting resources into those grade levels to move the needle very, very quickly?
Yes.
Yeah, so that was my thought. You know, I'm, I'm thinking, okay, yeah, you, we can fix, we can do the vertical alignment of the first, second, kindergarten, but that, but are we, is it, is it so targeted that we're actually going to move the needle? Are we really targeting third, fourth, and fifth grade right now with what we have? Because we need, we've got to move the needle.
So just to kind of highlight the, the two main important things, so with the, the objective one, we, just kind of like Mr. Crable, when he came and spoke to us, you know, we've been working the last couple of weeks, years, working on the TECS, focusing on those, working on the strategies with teachers. So we've done a really good job with teachers understanding the TEAC, learning instructional strategies, and now the focus is really delving down to those learning. What is the students learning? What are we doing about those students who aren't learning? Which kind of leads to goal two, which is our focus of really improving interventions. So we've been working and continue to work on our tier one instruction. That's where our coaches from the district, the campus, Region 12 are working. But now really working on also making our interventions very targeted and specific for those students who aren't making it.
That's wonderful. Yeah, I saw the instructional coaching by teachers, district coaches, campus, and I thought, okay, great, you're bringing in kind of leaders kind of from throughout the, not only our district, but even our region. So I.
And it's becoming more targeted. So we've gotten a blanket of everybody's been getting certain things, and now it's, okay, let's really put the coaching in for certain teachers who need specific coaching, and then also developing model classrooms for each of those different subject areas so that we have places to send those teachers who need additional support.
Mm-hmm.
Great, yeah.
You know, one other thing I'd like to note for Alta Vista is when you, you know, we really look, obviously, we look at all of our schools, but we have six schools that are getting a level of scrutiny that is excessive. We can, you know, just so we're clear how close Alta Vista was to making it. It basically comes down to one student per test.
Per classroom.
Per classroom, and they make it.
So 30, 33 students across eight, eight tests, and then approximately four teachers per classroom, which was approximately one student per test per classroom. And so that kind of goes along with our, this is really the power of one. And so we've talked to our, our staff, I've talked to our partners about that importance, where every person is important, every student is important.
Thank you.
Other than the vertical team triad, anything else you'd highlight as something new this year?
Um, no, just really taking what we're doing and taking it to the, really focused on the student learning.
We also could name some other things that are happening at Alta Vista, but we can't do them in open session because there are personnel issues.
Ms. Sykes?
Thank you, Mr. President. I like the, of course, you've got a lot of things integrated into this that you could explain, but, you know, we don't take the time to do it, and I appreciate the level of detail. But my question is, if you look over the expected outcomes and results, it, it seems like it's largely quantitative rather than qualitative. Is that something, when we target expected outcomes, goals, and results, are we comfortable with the fact that it's quantitative in terms of participation as opposed to qualitative?
You know, I think the basic goal, I mean, we have within, is that the goal number one, the goal number two is that we want a minimum of 60% of our students approaching grade level.
It, I guess I'm just saying, it seems like it's largely focused on attendance. I mean, well, participation, attendance. And I don't, I don't know if that addresses the qualitative nature of what it will take to achieve the, the results that you're looking for. Do you see, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Let me, let me respond to that if I may. I think your point is excellent, but for the record, this is a TEA turnaround plan. Now, if you want to talk about some of the qualitative parts of our system, this, this template doesn't lend itself to that. This template lends itself to quantitative, research-based practices. That's why you see some, what I would call respectfully redundancy, because we can't be, now, having said that, you want Dr. McDermott to stand up and talk about what we're doing? That is qualitative parental and family involvement, door knocking, engaging our business community, I mean, the list goes on and on of those types of things that are also part of our plan.
Well, and that was part of not having the redundancy of going back to our goal at the top of the page, 60% of students.
Mr. President, well, I have, I just have a follow-up for that, with that, because we've been looking at these targeted improvement plans now for years. And as a board member, like Pat said at the outset, they don't make, make much sense to us. And I recognize that this is a TEA required form, and as a board member, I'm relying on you. I'm relying on the superintendent to tell me that these meet your approval, and this is what we need to do to meet TEA's approval to move forward. That being said, I believe that what you have targeted in each of our campuses that are IR is probably much broader in scope in one respect, and then more targeted in another than what we see on a TEA form. And so, like Stephanie, I have a lot of questions about all of these forms, but I, one, number one, recognize I'm not the expert, that you are, and that, that you're doing the work that needs to be done. It's, it's just, again, I'm just feeling a lot of frustration in that we're in a system that somehow is pushing the approval of these forms to the seven of us when we're not education experts. And that is what we hire you to do, and I am looking to you, Dr. Nelson, to recommend to us that these are the targeted improvement plans that we need to submit to TEA to move the ball forward.
Excellent point, and it's the frustration with the system. You know, I don't want to be disrespectful to the Texas Education Agency in an open meeting, but there's a, there's a disconnect. There's a disconnect when it comes to what they ask school boards to do. For the record, how they want us, hold school boards accountable for management. And then there's a huge, we'll say for another day, disconnect with unfunded mandates. So they have. So they have all these mandates, but yet, you know, their property tax legislation is flawed at, I'm just trying to be cordial and not be confrontational, but one of the things our team is studying is no fear of conflict. So I just want to respond to your points that, yes, not only Ms. Williams, the Assistant Superintendent for School Improvement, and myself, along with other cabinet members, including technology, student services, we all monitor these turnaround plans to the letter. And we have other plans to present to the board that go with this. So this is just one process. I would say respectfully to the principals that are here, I believe they would tell you that the expectations are crystal clear. They understand what the accountability looks like. I mentioned earlier, when I mentioned earlier about personnel issues, I'm not talking about the principals. I'm talking about classroom teachers who are dues-paying members to our local associations, God bless all of them, including A T P E and T S T A and A F T and whoever they are, because this is not personal for us. We have to increase our accountability, and yes, we want to be innovative, but we already know what works. It's working at some of our other schools. So I just, we definitely want to participate in this exercise, and we have done so. Ms. Williams is accountable to these turnaround plans in her evaluation. And so I'll just leave it at that, and I share your frustration with the system that basically expects school boards to be curriculum and instruction experts, which very few of you are.
Anything else from Ms. Logan?
Thank you so much. We know you're working hard, and thank you.
Do you want to have questions to the others?
Huh? Yeah, I just, it, it's really one quick question. You know, some of them are, hey, I really love that you're doing this, some of them are, hey, explain this to me.
Do your thing.
Yeah. I mean, I know it's a system. I get it, but I also think, yep, if they spent time on it, you know, I think this, i-
And you're helping the numerator on the, on the.
Honestly, I'm helping the numerator.
Take all the time you need.
Brook Avenue, so.
All right, there she is, Ms. Pedrati.
I, I kind of want to preface all of this with, I know you're working hard. I know you're doing the best by your students. I know, so it is not a, let me point out the horrible things that I think are happening. That's not it. You know, I think there's some great things happening. I just have questions about some of the, some of these other things. So, you know, I was looking on the, teachers don't have structure, this problem statement to root cause. So are you, when I was looking at this, I thought, wow, fifty-five percent of teachers will be proficient, is that, are you feeling like that is what you're, you have right now on your campus? Is it only fifty-five percent?
Yes, and we're looking at six weeks from August twenty-first. So we run a six-week PLC cycle. Right now, we have about fifty-five percent of our teachers. I also have five brand-new teachers to my campus. I only have twenty-four classroom teachers. So when you look at that percentage, yeah, our numbers are, we have a lot of brand-new teachers who have never been in the profession, or this is their first time in elementary school. So they're not used to the elementary process of PLCs and teaching all subject levels.
Okay, great. And the, I, I like here, too, the collaborative planning tool will be developed to facilitate and provide focused planning. Is that something you guys are, are generating on your own campus, or is that something that the, or what is?
That, that was brought on, um, last year, we had a need, a desperate need. We realized that our teachers were not able to really look at the breadth and depth of teaks and be able to pull out the most important parts and teach the academic vocabulary. And again, I had a high turnover last year. So with that in mind, we said, we need a collaboration tool. We also redeveloped our master schedule, so we have a ninety-minute PLC every single day. We start with fifth grade, Monday's fifth grade, Tuesday's fourth grade, so on, so on, till the end of the week. Within that ninety minutes, we focus on collaboration. We look at what is.
Vertical, I mean.
Horizontal, horizontal collaboration, yes. And so we look at the teaks with the collaboration tool. We figure, what is it that the students need to know? How are we going to know if they're successful? What's the academic vocabulary? How are we teaching the academic vocabulary? How are we hitting the students who haven't met the expectation? And how are we hitting the students who have gone beyond that expectation? And to make sure that we're providing well-rounded instruction.
Okay, yeah, that was, that was great. I just, again, the same thing, I love how you're bringing on different people, leadership, you know, the instructional specialists, all of that, to really kind of help, yeah, just help your, help your teachers. If you're, you've got fifty-five percent, obviously, I know it's a numbers thing here, but, you know, if you've got fifty-five percent, I mean, I, I think, obviously, modeling all of that is so helpful for them. So I, I appreciate you doing that, too. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Quick, quick follow-up, Mr. President, if I may? So Ms. Pedrati, could you give the board a brief overview of how effective or lack thereof your relationship has been with Mrs. Benson?
Oh, yeah, Mrs. Benson's great. Um, you know.
How, how have you, how has she been great?
Well, last year, she, she was our E L L, you know, obviously, is the E L L coordinator for the district. She came in and she really assisted us with E L L. This year, she has been phenomenal with being able to provide us resources at the drop of a hat. In fact, right just five minutes before the board meeting started, she sat down and said, what do you need? So with Ms. Benson in place, she has, she, she knows my campus inside and out, and that was from the working relationship we had as E L L coordinator and Brook Avenue. And so now it's just a bigger, you know, bigger volume with all our students.
No further questions.
Great.
Sound like an attorney. What do we got next? Jay Hines?
Crespi's next.
Crespi's next.
On my little thing here. Hi.
Mr. Jacob Donald?
Sorry, yeah, it's just like one question per campus.
No problem, you don't have to keep telling.
Okay, here we go. So I was reading your, your targeted improvement plan. The question that I had was the spiraling. Is that not something that is, sorry, it's on the problem number two, root cause two? Is that not something, maybe this is more of a Ms. Benson question, or, but is that not something that's already embedded in the curriculum, that spiraling?
Yes, I mean, it, it, it is to a degree, but the effectiveness of that, I, I think needs some examination, I guess is the best way to say it, so.
Say that, Mrs. Cordewig, if I may help Mr. Donnell, and you're certainly welcome to add, is that if you look at our, our scope and sequence, we definitely have spiraling embedded in what teachers are supposed to go back and teach. What Mr. Donnell is saying is that for your typical third, fourth, or fifth grade teacher, spiraling is not on their priority lists. He says, what they're doing is focusing on day three, this is what's supposed to happen, and if you didn't get it, so for example, fifth grade is supposed to go back and teach some third, or spiral some third and fourth grade teaks, but, I don't know, you know, a sixth grader gets, another example, he's not middle school, but we have two here, kids not knowing their times tables. Yeah, technically, it's supposed to be spiraled in, but nah, no middle school teacher is stopping and doing it. If they don't have their times tables, then in my opinion, they need to come before school or after school and get it. But, you know, that's inconsistent with our curriculum document, because it's supposed to be spiraled in there. So that's, that's what I think. You have anything to add, Ms. Benson?
Well, another, another thing that we've been working a lot on in the campus, it's not, not just that spiraling piece, but really working with the teachers on reading instruction, and that's also on their, on their campus improvement plan.
Yeah.
You know, it's really, one of the, we've been working on the level literacy intervention training, and Mr. Donnell, also, we've been working on writing with the teachers. We've identified areas where the, the IR schools, where we could really do targeted professional development and implementation follow-up with the teachers. He's come to the trainings, you know, these are the things that we can't put into the plans, and I want to honor the principals, because not only are their teachers coming on Saturdays, they're coming on Saturdays. Ms. Logan was here all day Saturday, you know, for a level literacy intervention training along with eighty-two teachers from our district. You know, even the, even the, you know, the consultant that came and did the training, you know, commented on, she was so impressed with us, our teachers and their level of engagement on a Saturday. And Mr. Donnell has been at these trainings with his teachers when we've done writing, you know, trainings with them, so they understand the writing process. I mean, they're about to go into rubric training on Monday, so they understand, and we can demystify that writing rubric from T E A with them. And then they're coming back all day on the ninth of October. So, I mean, it's those pieces, really looking at targeted needs of the teachers and growing our teachers, so, you know, they have the skills so that they can put that rigor into the instruction.
Yeah, and I think that's great.
So if I, yeah, if I could just say that, it was mentioned earlier about redundancy, you see PLC all through here, and I just, again, the effectiveness that it's done, or with which it's done, I have to, I have to rely on not all, not only just the, all the qualitative data that I have, but these anecdotal pieces as I'm coming in new. And it seems that really focusing on, we've front-loaded some of these trainings for the teachers in PLCs, that they've experienced it in small groups, five to six at a time, level literacy, all that good stuff, guided reading instruction, things that they need, but just communicating the expectation that we need to match what's happening from the teaching perspective to the student need that's in your class. And so you need to take some measurements in order to.
Absolutely.
And, and provide that third, fourth, fifth, whatever that kid needs to get to, that, that final standard.
Yeah, no, that's great, yeah. That was my one question.
Just want to be clear with Mr. Donnell before you leave. Mr. Donnell is in a unique spot in the Waco Independent School District. He is the only principal who is on IR and new to their campus. And so with all due respect to our hard-working principals that are here, Ms. Logan, Mrs. Sepphal, Ms. Pedrati, I res, love and respect all of them, but my relationship and my expectations of you is a little bit different. And so you talked about it in your interview. I didn't make you talk about it. You claimed that you had a plan and that you were gonna lead that school, and I'm just bringing that up as you present your turnaround plan. It's not on there anywhere, and, and I, and, and for the record, I mean, this is kind of, is, I don't mean to be silly, but the Baylor University is paying a lot of attention to you. They really are. He is, he's a current, in their current doctoral cohort, there's only twelve of y'all. And so every time I go over there, they're asking me about your effectiveness, and I sense that they believe that you are some type of unusually transformative leader. And so all of that, in my opinion, has been because of your unique ability to articulate your vision. But being able to articulate is only part of it. So keep states true to your word. I, I believe in you, I know Ms. Benson has supported you, and I don't mean, I'm not trying to be negative in front of a crowd, I'm just trying to remind you of your commitment when you took the job, because I, I share your passion for getting this done at Crespi.
Absolutely. If I, if I might, I'll just say, I said to some of our staff before, at this point, we're just well-intentioned.
Right.
Right? We're, we're.
We mean well.
We're trying to sell what we believe will work, and it's applying best practices, but ensuring that they are actually done with fidelity. But we haven't done it yet.
Right, we will.
Still doing it. We will, yes, sir.
Great.
Thanks, sir. Jay Hines?
Jay Hines.
Well, I might, I might have.
Glad to see you smiling, because I thought you was, I didn't walk up here like, come on, come on, come on, ask me a question. I was gonna be like, no questions.
I'll be honest, I'm not bold enough to ask you any questions, but I'm proud of Stephanie here.
Okay. Well, I, I really, when I was reading through this, I, I'll tell you what I did like. I really liked how you're having the kids articulate their own learning progress. I mean, I think that was something that I noticed on yours, and it maybe in one other that I thought was really helpful. Not only helpful, but it, it helps the kids have ownership of their own learning, and I think that's a huge pivotal turn for learning.
That was one of our weaknesses that we noticed last year, when we started meeting with kids, administrators started meeting with kids and going, you can do this, you can do this. They didn't know they had failed.
Wow.
Sometimes the truth hurts, but sometimes you need to know the truth. You know, that if you are not passing your test, then you never pass the test. So when they see all the red, like we want to see a green, then success breeds success. So the more they can see it, the better they'll do.
Yeah, and I think it kind of goes back to Dr. Nelson's mantra, hard work. You work hard, you can move that, you can move the bar, and, you know, obviously, as leaders and teachers, administrators on the campus, just making the kids believe they can do it, you know, sometimes is half the battle, I think.
It turns, it turns some teachers' heads, too. So if you can't get a teacher to believe it, you have to get a student to believe themselves to prove to the teacher they can do.
Yeah, um, yeah, so I, I like that, I liked, I thought that was really insightful, actually, when I was reading through this. The question that I had is kind of on the first one, just third through fifth graders not meeting standards. The first question I had was, on the long-term, the release star test, it says that, that activities time, like March, April? Are you, are you not gonna give a release test earlier than that to kind of get more of a?
Well, we're, we're following the district calendar for a full release of a D V A.
Okay.
But I give little pop quizzes.
Okay.
Somewhere along the way.
Okay.
Our first.
We'll have a conversation.
Yes.
Sorry.
Decided to do our assessment plan.
Okay.
Because we did make some tweaks to it up until September one, and communicated to the principals right after Labor Day, so.
Okay.
It's controversial, every principal's got a little bit different opinion, so.
Okay. Our first pop quiz is Monday.
You know.
Okay, and they're good.
One thing I did want to say with Ms. Sepphal is I wonder briefly, are there any challenges at J H Hines that you found, wow, well, this is different than Kendrick? Or are the challenges pretty much similar? I wonder, I wonder about that. Are there any challenges at J H Hines that are just significantly more, uh, different, harder, if you will, than you found when you led the transformation at Kendrick?
Yes, different.
I know one of them is parents, parental, parental.
That's no different. I think it's just the level of, there's a lot of community support at Hines. There are a lot of other people at Hines also wanting to help you. So managing the help is hard. That's a job in itself, when you know you need to be in classrooms, helping teachers help kids. So sometimes you just kind of have to part the waters and say, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we have to focus here. So I think that's our big, that's been the biggest shift for me. Fortunately, I have two very strong green assistant principals who are quick learners, and if it hadn't been for them, we wouldn't have made the progress we made last year, because they've really been able to pick up the reins and keep it going.
Well, and I know that, you know, just listening to you talk to Mrs. Cordewig, I'm thinking about Mrs. Cordewig's work in our schools, and I know that you've tried, had to tell the community partners that they've got to have some teak-based, you know, let, a lot of people just want to come in and sing kumbaya with the kids. And so you've had to say, no, if you're gonna come in and work, here are the things that you have to do, which Ms. Cordewig's program is fully endorsed, you know, and so I just wanted to clearly communicate that managing all those partners and giving them structure is something that's gonna help us at all of our schools using your model.
Well, we're not there yet, but we're getting there. And we have a big project to bring in tutors for our kids in January that we're hoping, we're calling the Bear-to-Bear Project, working with Baylor and some of the community development people at Baylor. So we're hoping to bring us, bring tutors one-on-one to our kids in, starting in January.
Great.
Since the state is so kind to us to give the tests the last two weeks of school.
Mr. Manning?
I'm quite sure that this, what I'm gonna say covers all of our principals, but simply because I live within walking distance of Hines, I know one thing for a fact, Mrs. Sepphal is there all the time. Six, seven days a week. I went by there, what was that, last Sunday or Sunday before last, and saw your car parked out front.
After church.
Yes, ma'am.
After church.
And, and, and like I said, I'm not knocking out of all the principals, I know probably most of you do the same thing, but because I live close to her school, I see her in action. But thank you very much, because I, I know the dedication and hard work that you're putting in Hines, and we are expecting a lot of great things, and it, I think we say, ball down the leadership. Thank you very much.
I will say, it has been a different beginning this year than I had last. I will say, it has been a different beginning this year than I had last. Um, so we are able to focus on instruction and on learning at this point. Uh, we're a whole month ahead of where we even could see instruction last year. So, uh, we've got, got to have a lot of new teachers, a lot new that we have to train, so we're trying to build those, that leadership capacity in teachers who some have it, some don't, some we're trying to build it, some maybe not buildable. But, uh, we're going, we do at least see some hope, uh, in some teacher leaders this year that we did not see last year, so.
Jay Hines is going to make it. They're all going to make it.
We'll take all of your prayers, every day.
Chris Sepphal, I'm still mad that you left Kendrick. I still am.
We don't shop in the South Waco HEP anymore, because there are other people that are mad, too.
I'm proud of what you've been doing at, at J H Hines, and just, let's change J H Hines like you did Kendrick, and, uh, we'll be okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
One person does not make the difference. It's a team that makes the difference. And the teachers are really rallying together, parents are rallying together, communities rallying with us, support with us, and we have a lot of people praying for us, so we have, if we're going to make it, this will be the year.
You're leading them to success, and that's important. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any more?
No, I thought it was it.
Is that it?
Carver.
Oh, we got the two middle schools.
Two more, sorry. I know Angela wants to-
I want to say just real quickly. I, I think your questions are good, and I, uh, respect and appreciate, um, your engagement, and, and, and it's not a personal comment, I, I'm just very sensitive to the fact that it is nine o'clock, and all of these principals will probably be at work in the morning at six-thirty greeting their students. And I, I get uncomfortable thinking about us having a, a meeting, um, where we're supposed to be about instruction and student outcomes, and we're engaging our instructional leaders at nine o'clock at night. And, and, um, uh, I think we can finish up quickly, but I guess I would ask, Dr. Nelson, in the future, when we bring our principals, could we move it up? Um, you know, we could have a closed session and, uh, sit back there and do our business at nine o'clock at night, um, as opposed to keeping these folks, because here are most important people, and it just seems like it's a bit, um,
Excessive.
Really disconnected, that we're expecting the hard work we're expecting out of them, but then keeping them here on a Thursday night at nine o'clock.
Point well taken. Ms. Cordewig?
Um, sorry, just one. It's just one, real quick. Um, and I apologize for keeping you here at-
No, this is nothing, all us, we all knew what we signed up for. It's nothing like a duty at a game, you waiting for a kid to get picked up. It's the same deal, so.
Right. Um, yeah, so I, 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 I liked what you had here. I think, uh, I was really, on this, uh, section two, organize extended learning time after school Saturdays for advanced-level tutoring. I noticed that on several of them. So you guys are going to be meeting after school and then on Saturdays? Have you, have you guys implemented that, or is that?
Yes, and, and so last year, we, we kind of hit it, and the approach that I'm coming with this year is going to be a little bit different. And the main thing that you have to do, especially with the young people at, at Carver, you have to get their minds ready and focused and excited about what we're doing. You can't present it as something of, hey, you coming to school on Saturday, you need some help.
Mm-hmm.
All right, I'm going to have zero kids up there and parents won't have it. But if one, if I presented to my students, this is an opportunity for you to get closer to your dream. I give them an invitation. I got a little invitation that I hand out. You've been selected by Principal McAdoo to come and be a part of this process, and your name goes in a drawing for this gift. And you get this with water to class, and tell your mom, I got, I'll watch you for a couple hours, you know? And so those cars pull up, and last year, we averaged a hundred and eight kids on each Saturday with sponsors from like Tractor Supply, providing us with things from Chick-fil-A, so it was just a great opportunity to have kids getting instructional enrichment, taking pride in being at their school, and mostly partly doing something positive that Saturday, and other things of Instagram and Facebook and all that stuff. So it was good to be.
That's great.
Any other question?
Uh, I, I will cut it short. The, um, I noticed on the special ed, um, students regarding significantly lower scores. Is that, you know, I, I love that you're having them included in the PLC meetings. I mean, that makes sense to me. Is there something, um, else that you need, maybe from the special ed department, to like, really help bol- bolster that, that sub-pop, or?
Well, this is the thing, and we, we always quote Albert Einstein, if you're doing the same thing and expecting different results, well, you're insane, right? And so the sped department, we met with this morning, and my assistant principal's here with me, and she's overseeing sped for our campus, but they really collaborated on what would be different, what would they do differently? So we got explicit instruction taking place, looking at how we're actually using personnel within the classroom, instead of just the pull-out motto, inclusion. They're teachers, and they need to be incorporated in that manner. And so that's the direction we're going differently for sped.
Okay, awesome. That was, that was it?
Okay.
And then last.
Ms. Jenkins?
Well, good evening.
Hi, good evening. How are you?
Doing well, thank you.
Good, good. Um, I loved the, um, when I was reading through this, I loved what felt like a lot of the collaboration. Uh, obviously, the, the learning walkthroughs, all of that, I thought that was, I mean, I think that's, it just seemed like there was a lot of collaboration on your campus from this. Um, the, oh, I read, I actually did the wrong one on this one. I'm going to mix this up. The, yeah, I mixed it up, I think. I think I did yours for Carver. Sorry, I had all these. Um-
Can I help you with it? Our, our teacher quality is really what the focus is, and you'll see that with all three of the, the major interventions. We're looking at teacher quality. The first one, specifically, we're looking at the walkthroughs, the protocols, the teacher interventions. What do we be doing with that coaching piece? We lost ten teachers last year in our recruitment effort. I brought in ten. I got three seasoned that I was able to pull from outside the area, but I got seven fresh. So again, teacher quality is big in area one. Part two is us focusing on our master-level students. So for example, this morning, on nine-twenty-one, at eight-thirty to nine-thirty this morning, I meet with a social studies teacher. We look at her sixteen, seventeen data and say, look, you're not, you, you showed last year you were not effective enough with these master-level students. So I'm going to take these thirteen students, in this period, in this period, we're going to set them up with a master-level tutor, and after the direct teach, they're going to go out three times a week and work on instruction, because we expect these students to do master-level performance on this, this exam.
Yeah.
Uh, that's a tough conversation at nine-twenty-one, this point of the year already. But again, Indian Spring was two points short, so we know, and we've, we've made several, several adjustments. But at the same time, we know teacher quality, and overall, as you look at our plan, that's what this is about for us. What can we do to coach our teachers?
Mm-hmm.
What can we do to support our teachers? What can we do with ELL and sped as far as interventions and strategies? And so all that's written in this target improvement plan, very focused for this purpose. However, like always, Indian Spring has twenty, twenty, thirty other things that we're doing as well.
Absolutely. I think, I think that's what I saw kind of in and through your, it just seemed like you were kind of really doing this collaboration with teachers. It seemed like you were targeting into the, kind of the gifted and talented, you know, those, that mastery level. And then it really seemed like you were, um, kind of focusing in on that sub-pop.
Yes, and as we broke out our sixth-grade school within a school this year, we, we believe that we have that model in place. We've, uh, done the vertical piece with the PLC as well as the horizontal planning side. We've adjusted that into the master schedule. Uh, and, uh, we've actually done some gender-based moves as well within the reading and the math, uh, program as well. And again, we, we believe that's going to get us between three and seven points of growth.
Okay, that's great. That was it.
Thank you, Mrs. Cordewig. Um, before you go, just in the interest of time, can you tell us a little bit about your foster-grandparents MOU that you want signed briefly?
Yes, we're working on that. We, we're working with an agency. We actually have our, uh, service learning coordinator, Travis Cheatham. He's been working with an outside agency. And these foster-grandparents, if they can come in, and, and we're asking that they come in and give fifteen hours of time to us and actually mentor, uh, some of our students in reading, or just helping them with, uh, whatever it is, we, social skills or whatever, uh, then that's the relationship we're, we're trying to establish. We don't know what the baseline's going to be. We don't know how many volunteers. We don't know, there's some still unknowns with this, because again, this is another pilot program that Indian Spring is trying to take on, but, uh, you know, even if it's just two or three foster-grandparents, again, it's going to impact several students.
And so the Health and Human Services Commission is identifying the grandparents, or?
Well, we're working with them, as I understand.
That was the thing that was unique. I mean, obviously, we've got lots of adoptive school partners and, and folks that we're targeting in. I've never seen us sign a three-year contract with someone to provide volunteers on a camp, I mean, either party can get on thirty days' notice, so the three years doesn't matter a whole lot. But it did seem unusual to sign a three, three-year contract that they'll provide volunteers on your campus.
Right. Yeah, it's, uh, again, another win-win for us, so, yeah, we believe so.
Cost to the district?
Well, the only cost, and this is one of those unknowns, because I've been wavering on this, what's it going to cost to feed them? And I've agreed that we'll work on feeding them potentially breakfast and lunch. I don't know what that's going to cost on my budget, but, you know, so. That's, that's the one potential unknown. I don't know. That's why I told Travis, I said, five hundred dollars, fifteen hundred, what are we talking? I don't know. That's, yeah, that's, I'm guessing.
Little bottle whoppers.
Guessing as well.
Central Texas showing up for lunch.
Old people don't eat that much. The answer is yes, if someone doesn't work out.
Oh, absolutely.
Someone's, oh, I'm worried about a grandparent coming in here and trying to, trying to, um, mentor as they did back in nineteen-seventy. So they come in here with a paddle, and they say, ah, you know, that, that don't work.
Yeah, and, and, and I've had that experience where, yeah, I spend quite a bit of time with them rather than with teachers at times, yeah. Just talking with them about, this is twenty-seventeen, yeah.
It's a good idea, though. Thank you.
All right. Any, any other questions on the foster-grandparent program? Mr. Jenkins, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, last item is the interlocal with the Clarus Center. Uh, Robin, I guess Jesse can get you, come, can record you, get up. With one real, I know this is being funded through the system of care grant. Is it still, is the plan at some point that hopefully it becomes self-funding through Medicaid billing?
So this MOU has zero cost to the district and is not, the only one that's a system of care grant is Brook Avenue. But all of the other campuses are, this year, their first year of self-sustaining. And Brook Avenue, actually, I think that they, Sarah, has Sarah? Do you know, because there's a self-sustaining, too, because there, it was just one year in the system of care grant. So all of these will be set up through independent billing, um, and funded that way.
Through, with the Medicaid billing.
Through the Medicaid billing, yeah.
Any other questions on that? Any other announcements? Folks, thank you, and we will stand adjourned.